Ready? Beautiful. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October tenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Newington Board of Fire Commissioners. If we could all rise for pledge allegiance, please.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just for.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody. I know our liaison had other commitments tonight from the town council. She was gonna try to make it, but she had a few meetings tonight, so. Meeting's been called to order, pledge allegiance done, attendance is being taken, approval of prior mini-meeting minutes. Okay, I'll second it. Thank you. Welcome, Councilor Manke. That's all right. Public participation for the first time, anybody would like to speak? I don't see anybody online, no takers, going once, twice? Okay, communications, monthly reports.
Monthly reports. Board of Fire Commissioners from Fire Chief Trauma. One of the correspondents from Chief Trauma. Certainly have had a other busy month. We have reports from Assistant Chief LaPierre of CAR TWO, September twenty twenty four. Fifteen items that the chief has been dealing with and working on, so. Thank you, Chief, for submission of your meeting, your minutes. Deputy Chief Regina Training. It amazes me every time I get one of these new reports, when I look at the totals. Three hundred and fifty-five point seven five hours with two thousand four hundred and ninety-six point two four man-hours. Headed by five hundred and fifty-three firefighters for the month of September, it's just unbelievable. Sure.
Sixteen of our firefighters just recently passed, I shouldn't say passed, finished the fire truck one class, they're just waiting to take their.
Correct.
Sixteen Newington members.
And we actually also have the state to host two classes next year, come twenty twenty five, we're looking for fire officer one and incident safety officer, both probably spring summertime next year.
Awesome.
Excellent.
I also have, excuse me, Deputy Chief Jean Santi, Building and Apparatus Division, monthly report. Taking a look at everything, it looks like he's staying on top of the pool of the items that he needs to be addressing. Car Four monthly report from Chief Stegmeier. We have two applicants, applications in process. And I know that we have one officer that was appointed at company number four, congratulations to Adam Nadeau on his appointment to Second Lieutenant of Company Four for the remainder of the officer's term. And I also have, last but not least, is the Fire Marshal's report, DJ, I know that you guys have been working your tails off. Total inspections for the month of September, a hundred and fourteen, so my hats off to you guys.
That's a lot.
That's that's tremendous amount, so my hats off to you guys. And I know that for DM updates is Anthony Carlson is in the fire, well, as of this writing, he is in the Fire Investigators class, but he's also working out of your office as of now. So, and as well as Captain Muir will be working in the, in your office, starting next week.
And Tim Sullivan's in.
And Timmy's, yeah.
He'll probably be in B, January, December, January timeframe.
Before he comes onboard, correct?
Well, we're gonna try to get up there, we just want to make sure it's okay with this full-time department, just to get them sworn in.
Okay.
If we can't, then it'll be probably January.
Very good.
Yeah, one question on those festivals that are coming up on Church Street, that's not. I know you made everybody aware and sent the emails out, that shouldn't be a big ordeal for the department.
It shouldn't be.
Okay.
All reports are submitted and accepted.
Okay. Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ledger status, I looked over the ledger status this evening. Few big changes, I see the company checks went out, which is great, I know the guys have been asking for that, everything else, equipment maintenance chief, that's not a very big one anyway. But everything looked good, we seem to be about where we should be for three months into the year, for July, August, September. So I make them ask for a motion to accept the ledger status.
To accept the ledger status?
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And also the Fire Marshal's budget report, also, I'm sorry, the Fire Marshal's budget report, that looks like it's in really great shape. Also. Old business. Radio system update.
Well, we have some nice, really good news, tomorrow our radios will be delivered to headquarters, I should say our portables will be delivered to headquarters now, Sergeant LeChance is going up with Tom Lachey. We will pick them up at Northcom, they'll be brought here, we'll inventory them, once we get them inventoried, we actually have SDI training set up for next week, which is our accountability.
What's SDI?
It's our personal accountability for the Motorola DPX system. So there will be training next week on that, Tuesday and Wednesday. Once that gets done, then we'll also have another training session on the use of the portables, and then cross our fingers that everything goes right, we can start putting the portables in operation. And mobiles are the next in line. Once the portables were programmed, they're gonna program a mobile so that we can physically see how they're laid out, make sure they're good, once those are, then they'll go into production, they call it.
Excellent.
When that production goes into.
Production means use?
Well, no, production means that they actually program the actual mobiles for the entire department.
Okay.
And then after that, then it goes to installs, so everything goes right, probably looking at three to four weeks, hopefully to start installs. Cross our fingers, they're looking to get this radio system now, they're pushing it pretty hard to get this fully operational by the end of the year. So.
Right.
Finally, really good news.
Something interesting today, as I was purging my emails and getting rid of a lot of old backdated emails, I came across an email that was sent on September of twenty twenty one from the Board of Fire Commission to the Mayor of the Town Council requesting this, so it's been three years in the making, but it's been long before that, so. This has been a very long project, and hopefully we'll, we're on the five-yard line and ready to kick it in, so, great, thank you.
One comment in the radio system, I can't thank Sergeant LeChance enough for the work that he's put into the system, he's staying on top of stuff, I mean, he's tremendous, and hats off to him because it's a lot of work. But he's been right on top of everything and has been fantastic, so I can't say enough about the work that he's done to help us move our project along, as well as the other departments.
Right, and, and for the public that's watching this, you know, you might think that's grabbing a radio and turning it on and using it, but this is town-wide, police, fire, EMS. Parks, highway. Town administration. It's huge, it's huge, and awesome, but thank you for updating us on that, and also hats off to Lieutenant Sergeant LeChance for his work on helping us getting it to a finish, thank you.
I just have one question regarding the radio system, where do we, where do we stand, where do we sit with Callahan's?
So right now, we're in a whole pattern, the new equipment is installed at Callahan Tower. And now we're just waiting on the Callahan, and when you get back to Sergeant LeChance for discussions on the next steps forward for that part.
Okay.
But as of right now, the new equipment is installed up there. We're gonna continue to move forward, and then we'll see what happens with the rest of it.
Okay.
But right now, it's just, we had a meeting, we're just waiting on the response, that's it.
And the, so it's the new Motorola equipment, and now is there anything on the tower that runs the new equipment, or no?
No, the antennas that were up there, they actually recently got damaged anyway, so the antennas are actually new, so it's actually beneficial to us.
Okay, I didn't know if there was satellite dishes or no, just regular antennas.
So the way it works now is we used to work off of a microwave link, which is a basically a point-to-point contact through microwave dishes, and that's how you'd use to communicate, now we have fiber up there, so it's fiber from Callahan site all the way back to Police Department.
Oh.
And that's how it's communicated.
Oh.
That's how our fiber runs, the cordyceae operate, it starts up there, goes all the way back to Police Department, that's the cordyceae.
Oh, and it's just like them?
Yeah, it's basically fiber link.
Interesting, because I can remember one time when we were talking about this, we'd have to set ladder trucks up for point of sight to see if we can see one tower to the next, from one firehouse to the other, that technology's.
If you look up at the firehouse here, we have a microwave one here, and there's a microwave one up at Callahan, that's how we used to do it, so, but not anymore.
Not anymore, old technology. Oh, cool, all right, thanks. Chief LaPierre, grant updates.
Unfortunately, we just got word on Thursday that we were not awarded either grants, all the grant funding has been allocated with the departments, I did talk to a grant writer, Sonia, she was going to attend, either her or Julie were gonna attend the turned-down seminars. And I talked with Chief Trauma, and we're going to resubmit this year the same gear washers for the stations.
Okay.
Try to keep on moving forward, as it is, we know it's important, we want to keep sending the message that we feel it's important, especially with the new gear that we have coming in. Which everybody's been sized for. We've actually gone to, as of next year, twenty-six, nobody's gonna be able to sell PFAS gear in Connecticut. We're gonna get our first batch of PFAS free gear this year.
Excellent. We don't have to. No, we don't have to, at twenty-six, we don't have to refit the whole, okay, use it till it expires and then new.
The only thing in twenty-six, nobody can sell gear with PFAS in Connecticut.
Okay.
And that's not, every state hasn't adopted that, but.
All right.
So just in regards to that, so the PFAS free gear obviously is at a cost, so it's costing us an additional four thousand dollars this year, just to put PFAS free gear on there.
How many sets?
That's twenty sets a year, so unfortunately, there's a price going, and again, it's one of those state mandates that's there, that isn't funded in any way, so it hurts the departments. So going forward, obviously budgetary stuff, we're gonna start looking to increase that number because it's costing us additional four thousand dollars just this year.
Two hundred bucks a set.
Because then if you go up once the mandate's hit, but right now Massachusetts and Connecticut are the two states that have made it illegal in as of twenty-six, let's have anything that's not PFAS free. I should say to sell, that's just.
To sell, right, and that's everything, helmets, weather, helmets, gloves.
This incoming set of gear will be our first full set of gear completely PFAS.
Who's the, who's the manufacturer?
Same manufacturer, and then Sergeant Ex.
Same stuff, a couple hundred bucks more set. Approximately. Without, but without PFAS. Excellent.
It's just a safety thing, for that cost, if you were able to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chief and I spoke about it.
Well, if the technology's there and we can get ahead of the game, we'll be a front-runner. Excellent, thank you. Billing per call update.
So we actually just received our first check the other day. Just some stumbling blocks that we're kinda encountering right now, is getting insurance information from homeowners and stuff like that, we gotta come up with a process on how to obtain that, but as of right now, we're receiving our first check, so we're starting to get funding in, so three hundred and twelve dollars, but it's something to start, and hopefully we'll continue on and move forward.
Yep, excellent. Space needs, company three, company four.
Basically a discussion that still needs to happen. So we all know we're.
Ongoing.
For space, so.
Yep. Same with the Fire Department pension review update, that's ongoing, nothing to it.
Just a little update on that, last night, myself and Chief LaPierre, we're at in St. Louis, many last night, Chief LaPierre reached out to a gentleman from the, from the Volunteer Fire Council. And he actually reached out to them today and had some discussions with them, he'd like to look at our current pension that we have, and kind of look at it and see what he can do, because Wallingford, I guess, is going through a pension review of its own. And he said that if he looks at it, he might be able to do something for us and help us through it.
Excellent.
Chief LaPierre has reached out and talked to some individuals, so if we can try to move that forward in the right direction.
Absolutely.
He said he'd give us some insight on what we could and do, and all that good stuff.
Be happy to have a sit-down with him, absolutely.
So I do appreciate Chief LaPierre working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Excellent, thank you, Chief. ISO update.
So all the ISO paperwork has been submitted, we're just waiting on our our reading. I have no timeframe on what it's gonna take, usually the last time it took us about two months to get an answer, but it all depends on how busy she is, or how busy the company is, so I can't guarantee the timeframe on that. But it's submitted for roughly two to three weeks, I think, at this point, so everything was submitted, we asked if they needed anything additional, she said no, she was good with everything. Lot of time, a lot of effort went into that, so I can't thank, I mean, everybody, the whole department, but especially the chiefs, they worked very, very hard on that. Fire Marshal's office worked on it, kept filling out paperwork, so, you know, it's kind of a joint effort, even the Communications Center, the Police Department, they filled out their paperwork, you know, timely manners, so it's been, been a huge effort.
Great.
Just crossing our fingers.
Cross our fingers, let's hope. New business, there's none. Which brings us down to public participation for the second time. Anybody like to?
I just was disappointed again, I appreciate it, last meeting with my grandson was here.
Had a ball.
He had a great time, he went home and told his mother that he wants to go back to the next fire first meeting, he said, you can't talk at the meeting. He was ecstatic, he was disappointed I was going to this meeting and I wasn't bringing him back.
Yeah.
I think you've got a firefighter for life there.
I hope we do.
That's all I talked about, this last week, going to the firefighter meeting and eating that plum, it, and exhaling, right? Right away, he's playing.
Yeah, he's my little buddy, I, I, he's my little buddy, but, you know. I'm gonna get a little sloppy here for a minute, but it takes a special breed to be in this job, and we have ninety-six individuals in the Fire Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, and the Cadets Division. And everybody in this department cares very, very much about the people we come in contact with, and about our citizens, our visitors, and our workers of Newington. And I get compliments every, everywhere I go in the town, oh my God, I met this fireman, he was so wonderful, I met this guy, do you know this guy from here, yeah, I know him, he was so great, he helped us out, we meet people in their worst time of their life, if they're calling the Police Department or the Fire Department, they're in need, and I can't say enough, and thank you, thank you.
It's important, I think, I think sometimes you forget that you see these kids, and, and who doesn't like to be a fire, everyone's gonna be a fire.
Right, right, right.
And it's important, I think, that you make a connection, I have another grandson that lives up on Northwood here, and he walks down here with his parents all the time, whenever the fire department's open, he runs right over and looks at the door, and where is he, I don't even know who you are, but where is he, it goes right out the fox. And that makes a hell of a big difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Makes a connection, whether it's a three-minute conversation or a tour of my.
You never know that that fireman, yep, that fireman may make the difference in that person's life from doing something greater. Say, hey, I remember that fireman told me to behave and eat my vegetables and study hard and.
Exactly, you never know.
Yeah. They are very important, thank you. He's, they're welcome anytime, and he'll come right up here on my lap again, we love, love having him here, I love that little guy.
Yeah, he done that with the best in the wrap.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Councilor, appreciate it. Chief.
The, I don't know if it fits into new business, or should be on the old business side, just an update on, obviously, we have received ARBO funding for the department, and one of them was the C cameras, those are being installed now.
Yeah.
Permisses working, you know, with Nico and the chief, and Chief Jean Santi about getting everything put in place, we also have received funding for the SIMS, which the chief spoke earlier about with the PAC. As far as the accountability piece, and the radio system that was all tied together. That we had received all of the parts back in May, although there was a snafu on their end. That they didn't, they missed a part on our pack. And when they told us, it wasn't, they told the chief and I that they weren't gonna be able to make it work. With the chief's blessing, I pushed very hard to Scott and MES, and the chief backed me up a hundred percent, and we came back finally, what, two weeks ago? We, we had to sit down and we're covering the state.
Excellent.
So the parts, the final parts aren't gonna be here till December, I gotta go talk with Janet and see how she wants to do this, because I know the funding has to be spent, but we're gonna be, we're gonna spend only what we were allotted.
But in their, but in their budget analysis of the PACs, they missed something that should have been more.
It should have been a six-wire system, I believe, at the last time, and it was a four-wire system, and that last piece that we had actually designed our radios around, and that's the SDI that the chief was talking about earlier this year.
Right.
That wasn't available work, and the chief wasn't happy, nor was I. Like I said, I pushed hard, really hard, and there, Scott is paying.
Excellent.
They're actually spending more money than we are.
Good. Good. And I'm sure if other departments see it on our backs and see how it works.
And that's kind of what I use as kind of leverage, is that we're not a backwards department.
So we're gonna be the first department, Hartford is the, Hartford did it first, put it test, we're gonna be the first to put it in operation to have both radio accountability, air pack accountability on one system.
Integrated.
Integrated, wow, that's awesome.
First, 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 or versus?
Hartford has got our PACs that's implemented, we would be the first to get it put in operation.
In the state, or?
That I, that I know of, from SDI, it's a whole.
Wow.
They just came out with the software, it's two years ago, a year and a half ago, but that wasn't developed, and then Scott came out with their part, and then the chief's got the upgrade for the PACs, which coincided with the portable upgrade, that's all.
Scott, when we, when we started this project, Scott was working with Leo Scari at Harvard, came out and they had shown us the whole program, and that they were developing with Leo.
Wow.
And Harvard, and that's what the chief wanted to go with, and then we started the radio project right on that too, and that was gonna get tied into all of this, so everything will be there at Command's visual.
Excellent.
Right down to.
So how did that, so how did that fall through the cracks?
We don't know, it's not our problem, I do have to say, the guy who did it owned up to it.
Yeah.
And it took a long, it took, it took a long time.
Oh, we refuse, at one point, Dad asked us to, hey, you can have this, three quarters, but the other quarter's not gonna work, I said, that's not gonna happen.
That's not, yeah.
Then you're gonna make it work, and it's not gonna be at our expense, that's Chief LaPierre, push it, push it, push it, and we're at the point now that we're just waiting on parts to get done, they're already, they've all been ordered.
We had to commit to doing it.
I will comment that MES and Scott, they have taken a little bit of their resentment to taking care of their mistake, and they're moving forward with it, so.
Great, awesome, very good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Anything else on old business for?
Just, just wanted to bring up, this past month, we had a PD Fire Department softball game slash picnic.
Yep.
I thought it was a great event, and we had a lot of fun.
Fabulous.
Even though the PD beat us, we had, we had a lot of fun, a lot of laughs.
No broken arms this time.
No broken arms, just a broken nose last week, but.
Maybe a broken nose from one of our officers.
But I will say, it was a lot of fun, and it's nice to see the two departments working together back the way it used to be.
Yep.
And I think the camaraderie between us is phenomenal.
It's been better than ever.
Enough that its command staff, they worked very hard to make the, along with our command staff, to make it work, and it's been awesome.
Great. Anything else, public participation? Once, twice? DJ, good, Tony? Everybody good, all right, thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Commissioners' remarks. Go ahead, Frank.
Oh, thanks. Wow. Looking at, you know, all of the reports, every time I get the opportunity to read these monthly reports, I'm just totally amazed at the way this command staff has shaped this department, the work that you guys are putting from the lowest firefighter to the chief, everybody has been contributing above and beyond what I certainly would expect, so my hat is off to each and every one of you. The Fire Marshal's Office is doing, you know, a tremendous amount of work as well with all of this new construction, so, you know, DJ, your guys are just knocking it out of the park, so thank you all.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, a few comments, one, I'll direct to Councilor Manke, some people were right, some people were right, and I just want to tell you, and with the Fire Marshal here and the Fire Chief here. Three, 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 Burlington Pike is definitely added to the call volume considerably, the new apartments in the shopping center over there, we're there a couple, three times a week, anyway. And with the apartments on Cedar Street, soon come online, we have the new hotel on Cedar Street, that, when is that gonna be occupied? That, when is that gonna be occupied?
They're still working on electricity.
Working on electricity. Um, so it's been busy. We're not the little podunk town that we used to be when I first started way back when the horse and buggy time was, they, all the kids say to me. Um, we're very progressive. We're called out. Just for example, we were called to, uh, the New Britain, the Burrowan Town Line. It was, the fire was just in the Burrowan at the veterinarian hospital. And we worked with Newington, Burrowan, Rocky Hill, New Britain came in and things went very smooth. Um, but we're there, we're out there, we're very visible. Um, we're not sitting on our hands anymore. As most of you heard tonight, the technology in the department is growing. Our radio systems, our Red MMX system, our, our Scott PACs, everything. And, um, hats off to all of you for doing what you do. And I thank you. And, um, the picnic was a lot of fun, got many comments, knowing a bunch of police officers are friends. They had a great time. They wanna do it again. Uh, the only thing that, as Chief Trauma said, we should maybe have taken the catcher's mask out of the bag before the game started and not after a few of the first pitches. So, but it was a great time and everyone had a ball, so. And we have a couple of things coming up in November, so. Um, with that said, ask for a motion or?
Commissioner, well, I.
Yes, sir.
I apologize.
No prob, no apologies, brother.
I want to thank the Town Council for the approval of the bid waiver for the training props, right?
Yeah.
I'm not permitted to bring it up, but I apologize for that. Uh, so that is in the process right now. We ordered it. Uh, I'll meet with Joe next week to discuss the site work that needs to be done, feasibility study and all that good stuff. So looking forward to that prop to come in. Uh, but I can't thank the Town Council enough for allowing me to, so we can move that project forward.
Um, just, can I elaborate on it for, just so for anybody that's watching this, the chief, um, what the chief's talking about is we purchased through capital improvements through the, um, regular budget process, a roof prop that's how big is that? Fifteen by twenty-ish, something like that? Twenty by twenty. And it's a prop that is built off the ground. It's not on the roof of a building and, um, we can change the angles of it, we can throw new boards in it, and, and we can teach the firefighters how to cut a roof, open up a roof so they can get their footing on a roof. Um, and it's gonna be invaluable and I do believe that, um, that also will help with our ISO rating. Um, so it's money well spent. Just speaking about money, there is nothing that is spent in this department that does not go through a very rigorous checks and balances. Um, we, we just don't buy to buy. We buy because first of all, the safety of our firefighters and second of all, for the training of our firefighters so can better our residents of the town of Newington. So we felt that this was a advantageous prop to get for training. And we got it. And, uh, hopefully by springish, end of spring or so, it'll be up and running and, um, we always invite anybody to come down to our firehouses and intermingle with our, our members. We have great people down here. If you're nice, maybe they'll even invite you in for something to eat. There's some pretty good meals that come out of these firehouses and we encourage anyone to come down and say hi to people in our firehouse. Um, if you have anything during the day that needs to be done, um, it's always staffed by our wonderful secretary, Sherry. Uh, that's upstairs. She can, if she can answer questions, if she can't, she will get ahold of the proper chief that can and get back to you. And let's just have a safe fall. Don't park your cars in any piles of leaves. And with that said, I ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Actually, that's outside for the course on hall. You can see the door lights, yeah.
No, sir.
I've never seen him before.
Really?
That's why I was outside.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, no, Kathy was.
Honest to God, I've never seen him.
You're right.
Well, I, I'm making sure to make that. Why would you say you're sure? But Hope is still there.
I've never.